Okay, we're going to return with committee of the whole. We have four items in front of us today. The first one is an update on the work of the Incarceration and Prevention Task Force. The Incarceration, Prevention, and Reduction Task Force was created by the Waukam County Council in June 2015 to identify ways consistent with public safety to prevent or reduce incarceration. These include identifying policy or program changes to improve behavioral health treatment and reform criminal justice procedures so that people who can safely be diverted from jail are sent to appropriate services or community supervision. This work session will provide the council with an overview of the work of the task force to date and a summary of the recommendations from its first two reports. And I'm going to turn this presentation over to Dan Hamill, who serves on the task force.
Thank you, Pinky. I did want to provide council and the public with an update on the Incarceration, Prevention, and Reduction Task Force. We've been meeting for over a year now, and it's a lot of intensive meetings. They're two hours long for the main task force and two hours for each subcommittee. I just wanted to provide a structural overview and then just talk about some updates this afternoon. So basically, the task force is divided into three primary committees: the Triage Facility Committee, the Behavioral Health Committee, and the Legal and Justice Systems Committee. The last one is the one that I serve on. I'm joined on the task force with other representatives from the city, including Jeff Brubaker, who's the community paramedic, Mayor Kelly, and Darlene Peterson, and then also Peter Raffado, often will be there. It's unclear as to whether he's a member or not. He does have a placard, but he does sit at the table and sometimes not at the table. So I'm still not sure about that. Basically, I did want to provide an update on the Triage Center or Facility. That is a $7 million capital investment, of which the county has all but about a million and a half to pay for that. And they do have the ability to bond, so there is that opportunity to construct it that way as well. The hope is to have that facility up and running in 2017. And I want to be clear as to what type of facility that is. So currently, it's a small facility. It's located on Division Street next to the Alts Jail Facility, and I believe there's a half dozen beds there. My understanding is that law enforcement and emergency personnel tend not to use that facility because it's almost always at capacity, so there's really no point in taking a person there. So the other two options would be to take the person to the emergency department or to jail. So we do need that third option for folks to stay the night or multiple days if necessary. And this is a voluntary commitment facility. It's not an involuntary commitment. I believe the RCW is 10-38-110 for the involuntary. So this would be an option for a person that an officer could say, "Look, you know, you can go to jail tonight, or you can go to this triage facility." It's really meant for people who have mental health illness, crisis, or substance use disorder. So the new facility will be 16 beds of substance use disorder treatment and 16 beds of mental health illness treatment, co-located at the same location with a permeable wall in between. The 16 beds are the maximum that Medicaid reimbursement dollars will allow. Anything over that is considered an institution, and so those dollars can't be used to fund that facility. So that's the rationale. I think it's important to note that we are in a climate of decreased provider care, if you will. We have seen an exodus of providers pretty much six years ago, six and maybe up to four years ago, where providers just left the community because the reimbursements that they were able to provide as private providers weren't enough to cover their costs. They couldn't make it pencil out, so their businesses closed and they went elsewhere. So we have identified that those types of services, so detox beds, mid-to-long-term care facilities, and housing, those are the big needs in the community. This task force does not work on all of those issues, but understands that that's the context in which we're working. The -- I want to provide just a couple of notes here on what the Legal and Justice ad hoc committee has been working on. We've been really pushing to have the county to consider electronic home monitoring as part of their -- in a broader sense, as part of their means to reduce the jail population for their offenders. And we did -- we worked closely with the sheriff on this to expand and manage this EHM or Electronic Home Monitoring Program. They are now in discussions with Friendship Diversion Services, which the city uses. My understanding was that the old model of county electronic home monitoring was very expensive, $39 a day. The units didn't work in many parts of the county, so it was really a problem. There's also a sense of risk aversion that was forefront in the thinking, but I think that that's been really talked through. It has taken a while for us to get to where we're at. And it does look like the county is -- they are talking with Friendship Diversion. They are entering into those discussions to expand that. So that's a good thing, and that's coming out of Legal and Justice. Behavioral Health, what's coming out of that committee is prioritizing enhancement, expansion, or development of programs and services that link to the Triage Facility Program. So what we can't have in isolation is to have a triage facility just on its own and expect for that to solve all the problems, you know, in the criminal justice world. It really is about providing other programs and linking the programs to that triage facility and linking the programs to one another in the community. I guess one of the biggest takeaways that I have in serving on this task force and this subcommittee is that so many of our systems are siloed, and they don't really communicate with one another. And so breaking down those walls has been very helpful in terms of looking at options like a pre-trial risk assessment tool that Commissioner Heidrick has been working on for quite some time now. He actually went to Yakima to take a look at that program that they have down there. We also have discussed pre-arrest diversion programs and what that could look like. And so the City of Everett has the Chart Program, Chronic High Utilizer Alternate Response Team. So they are looking at individuals that touch various systems, so courts, police, fire, the jail. So anyone who's a high user of those systems in Everett, there's a program that deals with those folks and helps them get the help that they need and stabilize. And so, you know, we're looking at something like, what could that look like for Bellingham? We've had multiple iterations of discussions around lead program, which is the Seattle Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Everett Chart. So I think there's still a long ways to go on this. It's a big system, and it's -- there are 24 people that sit on that task force, and there's probably another 10 proxies in there, too. So it's a pretty big group. One thing I'm impressed with is that even though we have varying perspectives, if you will, on how to -- on the right way to get things done, it's all done in a very civil way with a great deal of respect shown to the various members. And so I'm very confident that we'll keep moving forward. We have a lot of work to do, but those are the basic components that I wanted to cover today. And I'll take any questions, or if Mayor Kelly wants to add anything to what I've just said.
Well, I've seen a lot of progress, basically, in the year of sitting on that group, to people being able to listen to each other, that I didn't see when we first started in individual conversations that we were having. So for me, it's sometimes being able to communicate with each other and use the same vocabulary and know what each other means when we say things to each other is important. And I feel like, as Dan does, I think it's taken longer, maybe, but people have a lot of confidence in this Vera Institute, is it Vera Institute, that has come to do some mapping for us to show us what our criminal justice system looks like. And if there's one thing that I've learned from this is if you need facts and data, get it as soon as possible from a third party, because everyone's now kind of waiting for them to come forward with their information. And it might have speeded up the process a bit, but having said that, I'm thankful that they're here now, and we had that time together. So I think people are feeling more safe talking about what they -- what their values are and what they think, as opposed to feeling a little more reserved in expressing their opinions, too. And so I think that makes it a lot better, because you really know what people are thinking. You're not going to be surprised at the very end of the process by someone saying, "Well, I'm sorry, I've sat here for a year, and I don't really agree with you." So, yeah, and I really appreciate Dan and Jeff responding. And Peter said, I just asked him, because he is always there, and he said he's my --
A proxy.
He's my proxy, but he usually stays at the meetings, too. Well, he used to have a proxy every time. He didn't today, well, just a little bit. So anyway, I really appreciate it.
Okay, Councilmember Lilac Kristen-Bornman.
Thank you. I want to thank you, Dan, for this report. I think your report here, you know, in session and also publishing the memo and the report itself is very important. I think the more the community can see the quality of the work that's being done in this task force, the better. I did sit in for you on a number of occasions and also just observed some of the committees. I was really impressed with the high quality of the process, as you say. I think what I saw was sophisticated and nuanced and thorough and comprehensive, you know, so I have -- I'm very optimistic that the recommendation to come forward will be realistic and actionable and, you know, exactly what we need.
Councilmember Bornman.
Yeah. You used the term that I'm not real familiar with, pre-arrest diversion. And could you explain what that is? Because I'm not diverting before --
Sure.
I understand pre-trial, but pre-arrest, I don't think I've ever heard that before.
Sure. Sure. I'll take a stab at it. So I'll use an example from another city. So Seattle's Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program allows for officer discretion around two particular types of potential arrests. One is possession, and I forget the amount of grams. I think it might be less than five or less. And then the other one is prostitution that's typically associated with drug use to continue using. And so the officer has the discretion to not arrest the person and to put them into the lead program with their case managed. And then the case manager and the officers, case managers and the officers meet, a huge group. When I was there, I think there were probably 25 or 30 uniformed police officers and then case managers, who would then discuss that person. There was an MOU between the Police Department, which is actually Department of Corrections in Seattle, that's the way that works down there, and the case management, it's Evergreen, I forget the name, the Evergreen Services, I believe. So they can openly discuss in these meetings, you know, the success or failure of a particular client. The idea is to keep them out of jail, to try to get them services that they need, whether it's mental health, or in this case, it's almost always substance use disorder because of the type of charges. But it would allow for the officer to divert the person away from jail if, based on the type of crime. And when we're talking about this pre-arrest diversion, when we're talking about for Bellingham potentially, it's much broader than just an officer's discretion. It might be a social contact by the hot team or a CPIT officer or someone from the ICM, which is the Intensive Case Management Group, to keep that person even away from the criminal justice system so they're not committing crimes. So the idea is just, it's really a diversion program, intervention as well.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Murphy and Parker.
Well, as I'm just sitting here, I'm just thinking how much I support this work and support both of your involvement in it, and I just wanted to say, it may be obvious, but if you ever need support from the city council, I hope you'll let us know for anything that you're coming up against. But also, you know, if you have some key presentations that we could benefit from through observing, I personally would love to attend. So thank you so much for doing this.
Thank you.
Dan, I wanted to thank you for your time. This has been a massive investment. I don't know if any of us realized when you volunteered for it what you were in for, and of course, the mayor as well. I know you've been attending. It's a really big lift, and I do appreciate that from council perspective. We had mentioned in the past there might be a presentation coming forward on another thing that you brought, that somebody that came to present to this, and I'm hoping that that's still in the works. And I like your suggestion of if there's something that you all find really thought-provoking that you might bring it forward to council. I'm excited to hear that the behavioral health part is really looking at breaking down the silos in that. And I recently did a ride-along with the homeless outreach team, and you can see that progress being made even just by having those things in place and how they're starting to break down the silos and making sure the case managers, you know, and then having the police officer help outreach and maybe look for somebody to give a little. And then I think there's other community work that's being done as far as being trauma-informed and understanding, I mean, looking even further, like are we educating our firefighters on suicide prevention so that they, when they see somebody they're walking into in a situation, they actually can recognize that and maybe do a call-out for help or give some information? So there's just so many of those things that we can do to, even before the pre-arrest diversion, that's just in childhood and what we're all seeing. So thank you to all the community's work on it. And honestly, it's been a lot of work, and I really hope that people understand how much time you've committed to that.
Thank you. I appreciate you saying that.
Mayor Kelly.
I forgot to add that we have two groups working. One is figuring out how to pay for a jail, and the other one is figuring out this alternatives that we're putting a lot of effort in. And we have goals, agreed-to goals on the pay for the jail that we believe we need to have, a new facility that's more modernized and up-to-date. We don't really have, in that committee, an agreement on the reduction in putting people in jail and the reduction in recidivism of people going back through jail. And that's one of the things that I think needs to happen. And I actually had a good conversation with Sheriff Elfo today after the meeting about that exact thing, that we have, there's at least two goals, and I think it would be helpful if we all shared those goals before we move forward on what, you know, what we're going to be recommending. So that was all.
Councilmember Lilac.
Yeah, one last thing. I would really recommend the public look at the appendix B. The last page shows this little table right here of all the different programs that could be used to help reduce the amount of people in our jails. And this first column, Terry, I think that's the pre-arrest column, all the things we can do before they never enter the jail system. Before this started, I only knew about the things in the middle: drug court, mental health court, teen court, those things I knew about. Didn't really understand all the things that incur later in the process and all the things earlier in the process, which I think is where the most gains might be achieved. So that's really informative to see what we're doing and how we can intervene.
Okay. I, too, want to thank you, Dan. This is an excellent report. It's very thorough, and I know you've really put your heart and passion into this, and really want to appreciate that you've even gone to visit the other jails and other programs and everything, and you've worked with everybody on this. So thank you so much for your work. And obviously, Mayor Kelly, your seat at the table is very, very important in this, in especially balancing both projects of funding and incarceration. So thank you both very much for the work on this.
I just wanted to thank Mark Gardner for his work in developing this report, but also for attending the meetings. Mark's there with us every meeting and helping to summarize and capture some of those very complex conversations. I'm not a lawyer or a judge, but I do sit on that legal committee, and for Mark to be able to help me synthesize some of the information there is very invaluable. So thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Okay, that was for information only. Appreciate everyone's input on that. The second item for us today is a report on the demographics of the City of Bellingham employees. At the September 26, 2016 council meeting, council directed staff to prepare a presentation on the demographics of City of Bellingham employees. The city collects employee data on gender, age, ethnicity, and race. Applicants can voluntarily provide their gender and ethnicity information. And I'm going to turn this over to Brian Heinrich, our deputy minister, and Casey Luxstrom, our HR manager.
Good afternoon, Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office. Hopefully, you had a chance to review the memo that was in the packet that at least tried to give a, maybe a 50,000-foot level at where we're at as a city from a demographic standpoint. I have a brief PowerPoint to go over with you as well. I think I wanted to point out a couple of things from the memo just about how the city, from an employment standpoint, is fairly representative of Waukam County and Washington The majority of our employees come to us from within Waukam County. Their either, their last residence is a Waukam County address, or their previous employer is a Waukam County employer, so employer. So I point that out just to say that we tend to recruit pretty heavily within Waukam County, as you might imagine. That said, we did identify, and this is from a Department of Justice report, and there are some areas where we have some underutilization, and I'll ask Casey to help me out. Michael, you had a question about the protective services non-sworn. Those are, right there, it's fine. I'll ask Casey to address, but I believe it's everyone in fire and police except for police officers who are sworn officers.
Actually, protective, from that report, the protective sworn officers is, I'm sorry, was it non-protective or protective?
Non-protective.
The non-protective is everyone in police and fire that is not a uniformed police officer. So that actually includes firefighters in the non-sworn group.
Did I answer your question?
Actually, Brian and Casey, I was wondering if you could actually define what those other four role, all of those, what the definitions are of what difference between professional, technician, et cetera, if you could define those categories for us?
I don't have a list. All right, so let's see. Professionals tend to be most of the members of the E-team and the S&amp;P groups, which are your high-level department heads. City council would fall in that group. Yeah, and some of the mid-level managers, so only names are coming to me. People like Mike Olinger that are superintendents, those folks at Public Works, those folks are in that professional group. Technicians tends to be your folks in IT, and they are highly skilled people, so the folks at the Public Works Labs, like Peg Wendling and her group, and some of Renee LaCroix's folks in Natural Resources fall into that technicians group. The protective services non-sworn, like I said, is everyone in police and fire except uniformed police officers. They are protective sworn. And then service and maintenance is your folks like at Post Point, custodial maintenance workers, the folks that run the facilities for the buildings, those kinds of groups. Parks would be mostly in that group as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So from that same report, which I believe was either from this year or the year before, we did respond, and you'll see the memo since that's no longer working, you'll see in the memo that identified some areas of improvement. I don't know, Casey, you want to speak to that from a recruitment standpoint, from how you advertise, where you advertise, what you might use from it? Thank you, Ted. The examination of, you know, what are vacancies that we're having, we evaluate that on a regular basis, I think, as we have openings, in terms of what did we do really well, where could we improve? So I think that sort of continual improvement on a recruitment side is ongoing. Any other questions about that particular memo I can answer?
Councilmember Parker. I'd like you to go over in response those four bullets, if you wouldn't mind, in greater detail. We planned this very well, didn't we? So one of the things we do, and I'm not sure how much detail I can provide, I'll do the best I can, Holly's really the selections expert. We track our applicant flow for all jobs. Where are they coming from, both geographically, like are they within Waukam County, Washington State, northwest corner, as well as are they coming in through Career Builder? Are they coming in through, like using HR as an example, we would post with SHRM, which is a Society for Human Resources. We're tracking that kind of data and evaluating it for what kind of candidates we're getting and how skilled and qualified they are compared to where we're advertising. We do review job postings and advertising practices on a regular basis to make sure that we're getting applicants, applicants we think we should be getting based on their skills and qualifications. So actually, using Public Works as an example, we post with a lot of industry-specific job boards. If we're looking for, like, engineers is one, or permit technicians is another one. Those are skill sets that exist, but in low quantity. So you have to be really conscientious about where we're posting those and making sure we're getting the applicants that have, that meet those requirements. Let's see. Determining whether there are in-house career paths. A lot of jobs in the city lead to the opportunity to advance your career here and to move up through the organization. Eric Johnson over in Public Works has done some very significant work lately, building career paths in Public Works for our utility worker group, from utility worker one up to a skilled worker two, so it creates quite the career ladder. We're looking at that in some other industries, like the Building Inspector Series has been newly revised to be a career path. The Electrical Inspector, Combination Inspector's been revised to be a career path, so that you can come in with some really basic entry-level experience and then work your way up here in the city. And the last one is just to evaluate hiring retention attrition rates. We monitor, like, high turnover jobs. For example, there was a long period of time where we had a really hard time keeping a database administrator. Hopefully, that has changed. I think that's Nick now. But there was about a five-year period where we turned that position over every couple of years. It's a high, it's a high skill set. It's in high demand. It was hard to first recruit people and then to retain them. We have filled it a couple of times now with local candidates, which we're very fortunate have come out of other IT industries here in town. But we monitor things like that, just to know where are people going, if they'll tell us, and where are they coming from, and how can we recruit them from other agencies?
Go ahead.
Do we currently have any professional development or pathways that are specifically targeted towards minorities or women? No. And then, and then there was a, I mean, I would have liked the presentation to go a bit deeper in looking at, which I think is what's trying to get at in the first, I think there are five or four bullets, white females are underrepresented in the following categories, but it would have been interesting to see a male-to-female graph, trying to understand where we're at with the higher-paid wage jobs, professional jobs, and then the lower, the lower-wage jobs as well, just to try to get a better understanding of where we're at across the board. The reason why I asked for this to come forward is for the same reasons we put in the comp plan, the demographic shift that's coming across America. And I understand that Waukam County is predominantly white, but King County was also predominantly white at one time, and they are now projected to meet a majority-minority status 10 years before the nation, so that'll be in 2033. And we have these really longtime hires, which I really like about this city, but you get a police officer or firefighter in, and we know that these are career hires. They're probably going to be here for 30 years. So 30 years later, we have a very different demographic, and now they're looking at mostly white males in positions of power. So how do we today, with our hiring practice, ensure that we're working, maybe we're already working with the higher ed institutions, but they're also struggling with this, trying to get different students, students from a broader diverse demographic, to apply to their programs? There seems to be some opportunity there in working with our higher ed institutions to see what they're doing and encourage them to provide a more diverse workforce, and then to also be grabbing from that as well. I just feel like there's more opportunity, and I'd like us to really make sure that we're breaking down those system biases and maybe even, like, are we doing training on hiring for that unconscious bias that somebody might have? Do we do specifics like that for people that are hiring?
So, and I'll ask Casey to help me out. When we do a hiring panel, we do, the orientation for the panel does cover not only the --
We refer to raider bias. We spend a fair amount of time on raider bias.
Okay. So, yeah, so we do spend some time, there's a, I think we check in on that pretty regularly throughout the panel process in terms of reminding folks of what bias they might have, how that influences their decision or their perception of a candidate?
So during those times, I guess I'm struggling a little bit because, as council, I don't understand at this point what full direction we can give towards staff, but I do know that change is coming. I do know that we're doing some pretty big hires and that we've lost some, so for instance, I think in the fire department, we're going to be losing two females. I think we only have four currently. we only have four currently, to retirement. Uh, so we have two, two minorities, uh, that are working there. So, so if we do, if we're going to be hiring a large, as, and we're, I think you and I were talking about, we have a, an age population that's going to be retiring soon, I'd really like to know that we're not just doing what we've been doing, but we're going to go beyond and above that to ensure that we're going to be ahead of the curve as we're moving forward, so that when we're trying to do hiring, when you're going to a community college, you know, you're bringing, uh, a diverse workforce that's trying to recruit people and not just the white guys in ties. I mean, I, I didn't know where to go from there, and I'm struggling a little bit as a new council member on how much we can direct you there.
If I could, could comment a little bit on this. First of all, um, I, you know, I am very interested in our community being reflected in our workforce, and as you said, we also have certain demographic that we have to draw from. Having said that, one of the, the most, um, obvious things that, that we potentially could requ, uh, recruit is women in the workforce. So, um, I think that we should always be looking for diversity to be able to hire in our workforce, and a lot of it is what absolutely can we do and what, you know, what we're not poised to do at this moment in time. And the, the one thing that I go back to is, is our civil service, um, requirement since 1905, and it doesn't mean we have to keep it, but right now, that's what it is, and it is that we hire on merit first. So, so given two people being equal in ability, then of course, it's nice to look at diversity of the workforce too. But the, you know, the rules basically say you can't consider that separately from how well you're going to do the job. So why don't you let us mull this over a bit and talk a little bit, in a little bit more detail about what we think is realistic to do, and that's going to change over the next 10 years and 20 years and 30 years, um, to the point where our community's going to reflect a different demographic. And if our goal is that our, also our, our employment base reflect, reflects that demographic, it's going to, it's going to keep changing. As the demographic in the city changes, then the demographic in the city employment, you know, can change. But what can we do to make sure that, you know, we're putting every effort in to diversify our, our workforce where it, where it actually is feasible? So it's not always feasible to do, to do what works in a more diverse community, in this community. So can we come back with some ideas for you, because I don't know if we're going to get much here, except for the fact that we would like to have a diverse workforce, and I share that with you. And then we have to talk about the practical aspects of how that works.
I have a comment, then I see you, Michael. Um, uh, I'm also curious about what we can control and what we cannot. For example, isn't our fire department, it's a state right, uh, state test, and those numbers of those test results, we don't even have any choices on that, it's directly about test results, and it's not local, it's not diversity, if, if I'm understanding that right, is that not how it works for the fire department?
That's, uh, sort of true. So we test through National Testing Network, which is actually a national testing agency. Candidates though have to specify what agencies they will work for, so you have to be interested in Bellingham and check Bellingham on your box or we will never see you. In the last process, we got, we had nine vacancies, we had 650 applications from people that were willing to work in Bellingham. And Bill's here, he can jump in if he remembers, but I believe there was one, we took the top 100 candidates from that list, and I believe there was one female in that top 100.
Councilmember Lilly question?
Well, first, I appreciate it's coming forward, I think we're all on the same page, we would like to see a diverse workforce, but as, as, uh, the mayor points out, we have a rule, vacancies can be filled on the basis of merit, experience, and record. Uh, you, you can, you know, we can't do proactive diversity hires, and so it seems to me the opportunity has to come prior to the hire. It has to come in the recruiting phase, so that we have to have, and maybe an overly diverse applicants pool, and then we need to go out, you know, very actively to recruit that. Um, if, if there are more female firefighters out there who don't know about Bellingham and never put us down as in, you know, a place they might work, we'll never see them. So it seems to me that all the work in increasing diversity needs to be at the very early part of the process, in, in getting people to know we're here and that our arms are open for you, especially if your background is one of the areas that we feel is underrepresented or will be underrepresented in the future. So I think that's where all the activity is, since that's where I would, mayor, look for the ideas in the future, is kind of the pre-hire, what can we do there?
Councilmember Knutson?
Yeah, I agree with Michael and the mayor, it, it's listed here about vacancy shall be filled on basis of merit and experience, that's the 1905 Civil Service Commission. Sure, we could change the charter if we wanted to and go down that road, but I think in time, um, already the state of California is 51% minority now, or majority and 49% white minority, so the demographics are going to change, there'll be more applicants coming in. I mean, we have three women up here and a woman mayor, I mean, we've, inside city hall and local government have, uh, done a little bit better than the, the state average, but I think, uh, eventually it's going to turn, and it'll turn drastically when it happens.
Councilmember Parker?
I certainly agree with that in some ways, but I mean, women have been nearly the majority for quite a while, and we still are not reflected in workforce as much as we should be. So I, I think just because a, a community becomes more diverse, we have to be really careful about making an assumption that those positions will be available. We know about institutional and structural racism, sexism, all the isms, and so if we haven't done a really good job of, of looking at all of our practices and making sure that we're being extremely proactive in that, um, I think it, it can be a little bit, um, easy to sit back and think that because things are going to get more diverse, they're going to change. And, and I think, I like your comment, Michael, that it, it's really that proactive approach, and I think looking at, which can be really tough, and it might take somebody outside of us to really take a look at, um, because we might be clouded and viewed by where we're going out to. And, and I, I do want to compliment and commend all of your work, and certainly not trying to come in and say you're doing anything wrong, I just think that we really need to show that we're, we're being proactive in that way. So I appreciate you bringing something forward and maybe looking at policies and practices, are there any opportunities? And I would, I would stress that institutional piece, because there, we might have put things on a position that don't necessarily need to be there, but might, might be a requirement that actually if you pulled it away, now you might get a more diverse, um, group coming forward. So I would suggest it also maybe looking at that and seeing if there are any undue, um, requirements that we have in positions that might be limiting our potential.
Go ahead, Brian, if there's anything else. Casey, anything else you want to add? All right, council, we're good. Mayor Kelly?
And it might be good to talk about the goal of, goals of what we're talking about. Are we talking about having, uh, a workforce that reflects our community as the community changes? So that would change if the demographics in the community change, always looking for the best people, you know, regardless, and making sure that there's things in place so we can always measure our performance, because I don't see this as something that's going to, with the minority population. Now with women, as you know, I've already raised that issue in some, in some aspects, but the, the interesting thing is like for the firefighters and police officers, you know, they're probably not going to be here for 30 years, because their work career is shorter than that for a lot of them. And so, you know, I think that, that we're going to have an opportunity, you know, to look at that quicker than, than maybe other things. But, um, if we have goals, I think we should need to talk about, what I want to bring back to you are some re, uh, reasonable goals that are achievable within what we have, you know, to work with, and then if you guys want to give us goal direction, then we can take care of the specifics about how we might do that.
I like Michael's suggestion in, in going deeper at that pre-phase, making sure that we're getting out to a variety of communities. I personally like the goal of really working with higher institutions, I've spoken with several of them, they're struggling with the same thing. I think if we're working together to try to monopolize our time and our efforts and trying to create that, um, climate, and, and then, um, I think definitely for women in management, that's huge, and that to me seems pretty easy, and I think we could find the women that have the merit. Um, and, and then the last one would be, what are those policies and practices? Like, are there any, anything still kind of left around from the, the older days that we haven't really looked at to see that those might be, those might be limitations? So those would be the goals for me that I'd like to see, and then, of course, to be meeting not today's, um, not today's demographic, but tomorrow's demographic, because we know, we know that's going there, so therefore needing to do a lot of that preloading effort into different communities so that we're ensuring that we're kind of ahead of the curve, if even possible, those would be my goals.
Okay, well, uh, Brian and Casey, thank you much, very much for giving us a baseline of our, our demographics. I think it gives us a great place to launch off from and see where we can go in the future by setting goals. So thank you very much for that information. And that was information only, uh, our next, our third item is a waterfront district inflammation status report. Uh, staff is going to provide an update on the projects. The city of Bellingham is leading in the waterfront district, including granary and Laurel Projects and District Utilities. And I'm going to turn this over to Ted Carlson, our Public Works Director, and Tara Sundin, our Community and Economic Development Manager.
Good afternoon, thank you, Ted Carlson, along with Tara. Wanted to provide council an update on where we're at on district energy. Uh, the last time we spoke with council was at the end of September, and at that time we presented that, uh, we had an opportunity that we were pursuing, pursuing for district energy, and as you recall, the city did do a district-specific utility master plan that looked at different delivery models for the waterfront, and the preferred option was to try to find a third party, so a public-private partnership, someone that could come in and operate a district energy system, uh, using hot water, perhaps cooling as well, to serve the waterfront district, but that it would require engaging a third party to operate and maintain the system. And certainly we would need to have a willing partner in the developer and the property owner of the port. So when we met with council last, we had a proposal that, uh, came from a company called N-Wave, they have experience operating these types of systems. They had put a proposal together for the port and the city that said, uh, there would be a requirement for about $2 million of capital investment. Uh, at the time, we were thinking a million dollars from the city, a million dollars from the port. That would be enough to incentivize N-Wave to come in and operate this system, knowing that, uh, we don't have great certainty in terms of how quickly the waterfront will develop, so how many customers will hook into this system, so there's a little bit of risk certainly for anybody that wants to operate a system like that. But with that capital contribution, they were willing to move forward, uh, if we could put certain agreements in place, and that's, when we last spoke, we said that Harcourt was coming into town in October, we were going to try to get all the partners together, uh, Harcourt, the developer, the port, the city, and N-Wave, and see if we could come up with some type of written agreement, uh, memo of understanding, something that would talk about how this project could be rolled out, how the capital would be paid for, uh, what the ongoing agreements would look like, including how the city would recuperate the investment. The idea was always that the city and the port would get their initial investment back over time through, uh, some type of fee, uh, to the operator. So we had some really good meetings with, uh, everybody involved, but at the time, we're, we weren't able to come to any type of agreement. Developer remains interested, but also somewhat concerned about, uh, what the cost will be, the certainty of, of those costs moving forward as they compare something like district energy, district heat, to, uh, a business as usual model. Uh, the developer wants to make sure as they try to lease the space out, that there's some certainty that these costs will be comparable to business as usual. Uh, and there was enough questions from the port, uh, and I think also from N-Wave, uh, that we just weren't able to bring this thing together. So, the clock continues to tick because the city and the port are trying to deliver the infrastructure to serve the development. Uh, the city has committed to try to build the Granary Avenue and Laurel Street, uh, by July of next year. That schedule's slipping a little bit due to several factors, but we think, uh, we'll be able to deliver the infrastructure by September of next year to try to match up with Harcourt's vision for opening the Granary Building. Uh, and so with that timeline, we need to have, uh, all, everything designed, put into a bid package and ready to go out for bid shortly after the first of the year, so we're running out of time. With that in mind, and knowing that we haven't been able to come to any kind of an agreement, the port and the city would, staff are certainly still wanting to do something down there. We feel like there's an opportunity as we build new infrastructure to do something different. Uh, the port has engaged another consultant and come up with somewhat of a Plan B, an alternative to what we presented to council back in September, uh, a somewhat scaled-down version of a district energy, uh, system that would provide, uh, heat only, no cooling, uh, would, would entail building pipes along the Laurel Street right-of-way, so coming in off of, coming in off of Cornwall, along the Laurel Street right-of-way to serve, uh, all of the development off of Laurel, both interior, the waterfront, uh, downtown waterfront area, as well as perhaps a future site of Western, and along Laurel, uh, towards the waterway to serve any development along the waterway, essentially allowing, uh, district energy, district heat to serve just about all of the properties except for the Granary Building. The Granary Building is probably a little bit too far down the road in terms of development, the timing is too tight to get anything, uh, that would serve that building, but this Plan B would allow for the potential, uh, district heat of virtually the rest of the site, uh, but it would be heat only, no cooling, and they've identified that cost at about $400,000 to install the piping, doing it while we construct the infrastructure. So still taking advantage of the construction and the timing to put something in place, uh, that would provide, uh, something different than business as usual. The city staff, uh, perspective on what we've shared with the port is without some type of operating agreement, without some type of cost recovery agreement, uh, the city staff and the mayor supports us, has, have been hesitant to, to suggest the city would contribute into that, um, in any way, without some type of guarantee of getting the money back or some, someone that could operate it. So the port understands that, and it appears as though they're willing to move forward and build the district energy heating system only at their expense. They're working with their consultant to see if they can get us the design that we can incorporate it into our bid package as an alternate, uh, put it out to bid, and there still could be some decisions made whether they want to move forward based on the price. It's heat only because their consultant, and this is, this is supported by the plan that we, that we did as a city, showed that from a return on investment perspective, when you look at the finances of it, the heat only made a little bit more sense than a heat and cooling. And it has to do with the additional cost for cooling and the fact that in our climate and the efficiencies that you could get at building level cooling systems, it just didn't make sense financially, uh, to put in a centralized district cooling system, uh, but the heating system did make some sense. Uh, I guess the exception to that would be if you had enough use that had, uh, strong cooling demand throughout the year, like if you had a cold storage or you had some kind of technology center that had a high demand for cooling, uh, but at this point, we don't have anything from the developer to suggest that, that something like that would be in place. So we wanted to come back to council and kind of close the loop on this. Again, time, time is critical, as it's been for a while now, we don't have a lot of time to change design, uh, if we're hoping to get things into our bid package and meet our schedule of next summer. At this point, what I really wanted to do is, is present that to council, uh, let you know where we are, since we said we would try to get agreement in place, we have not been successful in doing that. Uh, I think the port is trying to come back with something that, uh, still kind of represents doing something different down there, reducing emissions, uh, admittedly not as much as the, uh, the proposal that we brought forward in September, but would reduce emissions at the site based on the centralized heating. Uh, so that's where we're at, and, uh, we did have an opportunity to meet a little bit with Pinky about this, as well as, um, Michael, and share some of these thoughts, and I know there's lots of discussions going on, but this is where the staffs are of both the port and the city at this point. Be happy to answer any questions about where the port's at, our timing, uh, why we think the city staff doesn't support investing in this at this point, any, anything you'd like to ask about.
Councilmember Lilly question?
Well, thank you, Ted. As you said, we had a chance to talk about this, we got into some of the technical details at that point. I want to thank you for your efforts, but I also want to say what I said at that meeting, because I'm somewhat disappointed. I think the port's, um, idea of just going for district heating, it's a, a smaller -- I think the port's, um, idea of just going for district heating, it's a, a smaller investment, I think it's also a smaller gain. Um, it really isn't the, um, well, I think it was, um, Dave Christians and the architects many years ago talking about the waterfront. The waterfront really needed a wow factor. We need to be, you know, need to be something about the waterfront that really kind of helps set it apart. This is one of those features that would have given it the wow factor. And my understanding is that district heating is so-so, but district heating and cooling, which allows heat exchange and waste heat recovery, which is available, we, there's waste heat down there, um, leads to much, much more, uh, payback in terms of greenhouse gas reductions. Right now, the district heating model would, um, be based on purpose, purposeful heat generation. You would burn a fossil fuel and you'd use that heat in, in a district-wide fashion, but the incremental gain over a building-scale heating, it just, so it's a little bit disappointing. It's more than nothing, and I appreciate that. I, I'd like to say, however, that, uh, after that meeting, I went and talked to two port commissioners, one of whom said that they were willing to go to the mat to invest in district heating. I don't know what numbers that translates to, um, but I thought it maybe translated into not to district heating, but district heating and cooling and waste heat recovery. So I think there's support. I talked to a second commissioner, and I think he was starting to come around to the point of view. I think the, the focus in that discussion had to do with, it's not so much cost, but your investment horizon, your payback. And the developer's looking for a shorter-term payback horizon. And the point I was trying to make is the city and the port, our payback horizon is over generations. We do need to be kind of realistic financially speaking, but I mean, you know, the benefit to our community goes on and on and on and on, and I think we need to think in terms of those longer-term investments. So I haven't entirely given up on the idea. I know that you were looking for ways, that doors are closing on opportunities, and I appreciate that and I, I regret it, but you're looking for ways of keeping some doors open. I'm still hoping we can keep the district energy, heating and cooling and waste recovery door open by pre-positioning some assets, as you say, in Laurel, if, if, you know, giving up on Granary for the moment, but at least along Laurel.
Uh, yeah, thank you for that, Michael. The one thing I would say, and I failed to mention initially, is that the, the waste heat recovery remains an option.
Okay.
So that really was one of the items in the, in the district, um, infrastructure analysis that made the most sense, that really did help in terms of truly reducing the emissions down to the waterfront side. You get a measure of efficiencies from the district scale regardless, but it really was the waste heat capture that, uh, made it look mu- much more attractive. Uh, and so that option remains open. And so by installing the two-pipe system, uh, we can continue to, to have discussions with PSC and at some point, uh, pursue heat recovery from the Enco Gem plant, uh, which, you're right, is something that is down there and we should certainly try, continue to try to take advantage of.
Uh, well, I, I just wanted to thank you. I know that this is a really complicated process. Um, I, like Michael, am kind of struggling with it because, um, just heating alone and no cooling is half of the equation, maybe even less, because there's more opportunities for things for, with a one system. Granted, we use a lot more heat than we do cooling in Bellingham, that's true, so for some, that might not be much of a big deal, but also I would imagine for the developers as well, they want to give a full package, um, to their customer, so that's probably part of it. Um, I'm glad to hear that waste heat recovery is still an option, thank you for that. I guess, uh, if I were to, I realize that there's a lot of things to work out here in a very short period of time. I guess for me, the thing that is the most important is that, um, if we haven't agreed on a system, that we are maybe still willing to put the pipes in the ground in hope of what it could be in the future, because obviously when the roads are open, what it costs us to put PVC in the ground is a lot cheaper than it is five, 10 years from now trying to put that in there. So I guess that's my minimum, is to ask that we look at, even if we haven't worked out what kind of system we're going to have, that we are looking at what kind of pipes it would take to put in the ground for a future system, if that's something that we have to work out later. Councilmember Lillikwist?
Um, first of all, I think he, uh, yes, I totally agree with you. I think that's just the sort of, um, door I'd like to keep open. And I guess I just kind of want to ask a question of you. Like I said, after our meeting, I went and talked to two of the port commissioners. They're under a weird system where they can't talk to each other, so neither of them knows what the other one is thinking, right? They have only three members in quorum rules. What is, what is it we can do to reach out to the appropriate leaders at the port, or, or do you think that the port does know what the left-hand or right-hand are, are thinking? I, I think there might be more support over there, and I think that greater level of support might translate to a little more willingness by Harcourt, and that might then make it sense for us to go a little further ourselves on the pre-positioning of assets. I'm trying not to give up on this entirely.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate that. After our meeting, we did reach out to the port and let them know that there is a desire, at least, uh, among the council members that we've spoken to, to continue to push, to see if more could be done, so we can continue to have that discussion. Uh, the mayor just mentioned she could reach out to Rob again and share the discussion today. Um, I think, uh, there, there's kind of two things. One is the timing, we want to make sure that, uh, whatever we want to pursue, at least as part of our bid package, we need to have that within the next week or two, which the timing's very tight. There is another option, in that things can still be built, uh, through a separate contract during our construction process. We allow franchise utilities to come in and work within the right-of-way, uh, at some point during the construction, and that's still an option that can be let under a separate contract if there was agreement on another approach. But I think probably the best thing we could say is we'll continue to have the discussion with the port and, and, uh, you know, continue to push. So the, the one thing that I, I, just to remind the council, we, we are showing that we're moving forward with the, with the district hydro. Uh, so that was another one of the aspects that was identified in the, in the district-specific utilities. That's something that's within the city's control, really. We're, we're moving forward with that and, and non-potable drinking water. So there are some aspects of the development that are different than elsewhere in town that kind of separated and show that it is a more sustainable development. Always would like to go a little bit further, but there are some positive things that are, that are moving forward.
Counsel, any other questions? Okay. Uh, this was for information only, and I also, I, I did want to say thank you. I know that Freeman Anthony has been working very diligently for many, many years on developing our eco-district and trying to incorporate district energy, and you are a strong advocate, and I appreciate all the work that you do on this, so thank you very much. Okay, that's our third item, information.
Hmm? Yeah, sometimes I...
Our fourth item is the reappointment of the hearing examiner. Under BMC 2.56.020, the mayor appoints the hearing examiner for a two-year period upon the confirmation of the city council. Hearing examiner Sharon Rice's two-year term expires on January 26, 2017. Mayor Kelly reappoints Sharon Rice as the city's hearing examiner for another two-year period, subject to council's confirmation. And I'm going to turn this over to Peter Raffato, city attorney.
Thank you. Um, so yeah, we're here on the reappointment. It was two years ago that we, uh, the council, the mayor appointed, council confirmed Sharon Rice. Um, by all accounts, she's done a very good job for the city. Um, and we went over a little bit during the budget discussions, kind of what, uh, what her role has been. And so the mayor has made the, um, appointment, subject to council's confirmation. There is a, I would say, a, a reasonable increase in the fees. Uh, when Sharon first started for the city, she actually thought it was going to be sort of a short-term, because at that time we were looking at, uh, potentially in-house hearing examiner. It's turned into a longer term, um, and she does, she has, uh, asked for in her contract an increase that's consistent with what she charges other jurisdictions. I think it's a reasonable amount, and, uh, if there are any questions, I can try to answer those.
Councilmember Murphy and Councilmember Knutson?
I just really appreciate all of her work and especially her fairness, so I'm going to move that we reappoint the hearing examiner.
Second, enthusiastically.
Okay, we have a motion in front of us to reappoint the hearing examiner, Sharon Rice. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Okay, and that was item number four. On now, we are going to move to the approval of committee meeting, meeting minutes. Uh, we have one set of minutes, they are for December 5th, 2016. Move approval?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero, and that's meeting minutes for December 5th. Older new business. Councilman Hornet?
Yeah, I just want to announce that we've been working with Marie to again, uh, put together, uh, MLK celebration for January 16th. Well, uh, now it's that Clyde Ford, who many know, he originated the original MLK, uh, programs here in City Hall, and has helped put them together for, for a long time. He is back in the area and will be emceeing and speaking this year, along with, uh, Daryl Hilaire and the Caution Chorus, and still working on a couple other of the different details. So just wanted, uh, that'll be again at noon on January 16th.
Terry, I was just wondering if we could invite someone from the Black Lives Matter this year to include them, um, so it doesn't seem separate, but we include them in the presentation, or include them in our celebration?
We included last year, Pinky. They didn't show up. They went and demonstrated out front instead, so, yes, they were. And, and we asked them to participate and come forward this year, so whether they do or not, but, but yeah.
We've asked them, that's great, okay.
Yep.
Uh, Councilmember Barker?
Well, uh, Chair Vargas, I wanted to thank you for coming forward. Having been my very first council year, uh, and having the comprehensive plan as that first opportunity, I, I realized, um, it was a, it was a really big responsibility. And you, you took on chairing your first time and, and in that climate, and I really wanted to thank you for your service to the council this year, and all the work that you did behind the scenes, because you really took on a lot, and I think it's a lot of things that the community can't see, but I could see as a council member, especially as a new council member, in getting me set and ready to go. So thank you for chairing the council this year, appreciate it.
Anyone else? Um, I just wanted to, um, acknowledge that this is our last committee meeting for 2016, and a lot of the information that comes in front of us is provided by the staff. And we have all kinds of crazy requests sometimes, and, uh, and they just do an excellent job. And so I really wanted to thank and acknowledge all the staff at the city, for those who help us here in the dais, and for those who serve our city and clean our streets and work in our parks and our police force and our fire. And, and I have to say that I am so proud of the city and the staff and the people who work in here. So I just, you know, um, and, and of course, Legal, who's always covering us, and, and who probably gets the biggest of our questions and our requests, is can we do that? So I just want to acknowledge the staff and thank you very much for your commitment to the city, and we really appreciate it because we could not do our jobs without you. So thank you. Okay, we have an executive session, unless I missed anyone else? Did anyone else have anything for, okay? Uh, we have an executive session. Uh, executive sessions are closed to the public. There's a report out in the regular meeting tonight. There are two sessions. One is potential property acquisition stamps, approximately five minutes, and potential property acquisition Raffato, approximately 20 minutes. So we will be, I should be back here by 3:30 to adjourn.